We are now live.
All right, welcome everybody. The Santa Rosa City School District, Santa Rosa City School District Board Meeting is now open for September 9th, 2020. And I'd like you to please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. And we will pledge to, I think, the flag or the sunset where we think it is.
If you can find it.
I pledge allegiance
to the flag, United States of America,
to the republic, and to stand one nation,
indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. So as we open our meeting for tonight, and as my usual work to ground us, I will just say that I don't think we can make any of this up. And I think that we rely on each other because it cannot get any more strange every single week than Lena does. And that I think that when people become anxious and uncertain and unsure and emotional, there are big reasons for that. And that I just know that when we give each other grace and when we're all trying to do our best, that is enough. And we've said that before. We've heard it from our SRTA president before also. Our best is enough right now because that's all we can ask for you. So everyone just hang in there and just, it's together and we're making the road by walking. So weird times. Thank you. Thank you for those of you here. Thank you for, admin staff is here, other staff is here, community members who are here with us tonight because there are plenty of other things to do. But thank you for being here and thank you for work and thank you for effort. And thank you for students and teachers in this other week of school and with PSPSs, actually. All right, so we had no actions in closed session to report on at all. Do we have any statements of abstention, board members? Seeing none. We have one adjustment to the agenda that I know of. We are going to be pulling E3 for tonight. Director Medina?
Yeah, can we pull F5 and F8 for discussion?
Remind me if I forget.
Unless items are five and F8 instead of being contract, how we discuss.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no other hands. Moderator, we are, it is now time for a public comment on non-agenda items. And moderator, do we have any comments?
So now it is time for public comment on non-agenda items. Please click the raised hand at the bottom of your screen if you'd like to comment on an item that's not on the agenda. We'll let you know when it's your turn to speak. Please keep your comments to under three minutes. And we will be trying a new timer tonight. We're hoping we'll help people keep track of how long they're speaking. And I do see a hand raised. And I am going to ask the other moderator to allow that person to speak. Thank you. It's Kelly Sparbaro.
May I proceed?
Yes, please.
Good evening. Hope you guys are all well. I know it's been crazy few weeks and it just keeps getting more interesting, as you said. As you know, my name is Kelly Sparbaro. I've spoken a few times now. I have a senior and a freshman at Montgomery High School. So tonight I wanted to take this opportunity to get out in front of something that I know that's coming up here soon. On August 1st, I submitted a letter brief to the board setting forth the position that our district is required under the mandates of AB 98 and the governor's reopening in-person learning framework that stated July 17th to return to in-person instruction 14 days after coming off the state's monitoring list. As you also know, the monitoring list has now been replaced by the tier system. Under the new system, schools are to reopen for in-person instruction based on the same criteria previously announced in the July 17 reopening framework. Tier one is now essentially the equivalent of the old monitoring list. Under the tier system, all schools in California, including Santa Rosa City Schools, are able to reopen for in-person instruction following the state guidelines as soon as Sonoma County is out of tier one for 14 days. Tonight, I'm speaking to request a commitment from the board to return to campus, to return to in-person instruction the moment that Sonoma County is 14 days out of tier one. Our case numbers continue to decline, so I am hopeful that we will soon be in this tier two. I know that the executive committee or the board as a whole will be meeting soon to discuss the timing of reopening our schools. And I am respectfully requesting that the board comply with the clear and objective standards that have been established by the California Department of Public Health for safely reopening schools in California, which is based on current data. And that is 14 days after Sonoma County comes off tier one. Another arbitrary quarter-long ban on in-person instruction is not tied to our local health data and is impermissible under both AB 98 and the mandates of the reopening framework dated July 17th. I know that there are many competing issues and many competing interests about this subject, but I think our legislator has been very clear in weighing the risks and the harms on both sides of the equation and coming up with this clear, concise, and objective standard. And I'm simply asking that the board follow it. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly.
And there are no more hands raised at this time.
And I think the timer worked pretty good, pretty well. Okay. All right. Do we have a CSEA report tonight?
No report.
We do not have an SRTA report tonight per President Will Lyon. So Superintendent, it is time for your report.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you too for being here. I, much like President Fong was starting out, I had decided that I would at least acknowledge the craziness of these last couple of days in terms of the PSPS, the high heat, the PSPS. And also shared with President Fong, and then I will share with you, I almost felt how easy it was to pivot because we are so used to so many crises and that it almost was like a numbing feeling, which folks, I don't want to ever be. So I had to kind of shake myself, get myself back together and say, okay, no, I'm not going to accept this as this is the way it's going to be. We've got to move forward and move forward in ways that, you know, I didn't expect. And I want to thank the parents and the teachers and the administrators and the support staff once again for pivoting on yesterday and today by not having to close school, but by shifting to independent study or asynchronous learning, everybody, so that we could continue with school. And so I'm so appreciative and so thankful to all of you for continuing to live up to the words that we continue to talk about with flexibility and with grace and assure parents and students out there that if because your electricity was out and you were not able to finish your assignment, just talk to your teachers on Thursday and Friday when you're back and tomorrow. Yeah, tomorrow and Friday when you're back, give them an email. We're going to be super flexible with the assignments. So I don't want you to worry about that, okay? And the only other thing I wanted to talk about was that this is National Suicide Prevention Month. And actually, this week is National Suicide Prevention Week. And tomorrow is Worldwide Suicide Prevention Day. And so I just encourage you to look up the services and supports that are out there for our fellow man and woman who might need some support. And that if you need some support during these really crazy times, do not hesitate to reach out to your local medical provider counselor, NAMI, N-A-M-I. And there are many wonderful suicide prevention hotlines. And so although we did not have a resolution for this this month, next year, when this time comes around, we will definitely have a resolution. And in fact, we may be able to get one on the 23rd so we can still honor this month of suicide prevention and overall mental health. And that we must never hide from it, that it is something that we all experience at one time in our life in terms of feelings and the kinds of things that we go through. I don't want anybody to hide from it. I don't ever want our students to think that they can't talk about it. If you need help, please talk to your teacher, any adult on campus. Please reach out to them. So with that, let's move on and keep going the way we're going. And just know how much I appreciate how strong and resilient and vulnerable we all are right now. So thank you.
Board members, do you have reports tonight? We're going to start with trustee Manieri.
Thank you, President Fong, and thank you Superintendent Kiramura. I was also going to mention September being Suicide Prevention Awareness Month and wanted to let the community know if you all don't know already. Last year, during this time of the month, we had a group of students who are mental health ambassadors, young students, a lot of them in our district, receive or be present for the Suicide Prevention Awareness Month Resolution. And this year, a similar group of students, a new group of students, but still under the same program, will be interviewing our own Yadira Esparsa, one of the new marriage and family therapists at Santa Rosa City Schools. And they will be having a conversation on Zoom bilingual this Friday at 5:00 PM. So I just wanted to let everyone know that our students are very much aware of how important this month is and this time and situation. It's a really difficult time for a lot of students. And these students are working hard to make sure that the community knows about what resources are available to not only them, but their parents. And they're also focusing on making sure that it's bilingual so it's accessible to their parents and to other community members. So I just wanted to plug that in this Friday at 5:00 PM on Zoom.
Thank you, Director Manieri. Other board member reports? Director De La Cruz.
I just want to give a shout out to SCO for hosting a conversation next Tuesday evening. That's really elevating the voices of Black students in our community. And so for folks who are really interested in centering experiences and voices that we need to hear more and really listen more deeply, that is happening next Tuesday from 5:30 to 7:30. So thank you to those students who are going to be participating and stepping out and being leaders in that way. So thank you.
And our own Vice Principal Monique Luke from Montgomery High School is the facilitator, moderator. Thank you. Other board members? Director Sheffield?
Thank you for the plug, Allegria. I just want to say as we're approaching a month into the school year, I am continuing to hear from parents that their kids are settling in and developing some routines, that there are, of course, still concerns over attendance and how it's being taken, especially at the higher grade levels. Yes, there's still frustrations from students and families. Of course, the psychological impacts that this pandemic is having on all of us, teachers and staff and parents and families and grandmas and grandpas and board members and superintendents. And, you know, we hear from the community that there's still frustrations with distance learning and of course, real learning loss, still technological glitches, and probably a dozen more concerns, I'm sure. So just maybe a simple ask for all of us is to continue to be mindful of the realities and limitations that students and families may be working with under these circumstances. I just will continue to remind us, I'll continue to remind staff and board and all of us that we are as, you know, as you, Principal, Director Fong, President Fong and Superintendent have said before that we're doing the best that we can. And I'm hearing some, you know, encouraging comments from parents and families as well. So I just want to share that.
Thank you, Director Sheffield. Director Medina?
Just one thing I'd like to add in relation to suicide prevention awareness. This weekend, I watched the film Robin's Wish about one of my favorite actors and comedians, Robin Williams, who committed suicide August of 2014. And it was a very interesting and educational film about the connection between neurology and mental health, you know, especially in our elderly population as dementia sets in and some of the things that we should look out for with the elderly population that may be experiencing dementia, but sometimes misdiagnoses don't lead to people understanding what's going on or what they're experiencing. So I think it'd be a good film for people to watch to understand what to look for, to help understand why sometimes people do what they do and that connection between neurology and mental health. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Director Lopez?
So just following from last week, my board report, I mentioned doing a survey for students to get feedback from how distance learning is. And that is something I will be going forward with. So I hope to present the board with this presentation as we go through with distance learning. And something that was brought up was SCO doing panels. And I will be joining SCO for the Care Collective panel on September 17th, talking about COVID-19 and just keeping meaningful conversations during this time, especially about culture.
Good news, thank you. I don't really have a report tonight, but I'm just going to make a comment about the current ad hoc committee that the board is running. Ed Sheffield and Allegria De La Cruz and I are the board members of this ad hoc committee for the School Resource Officers. And there are about 30 people on this committee. And the committee is taking longer and the committee has chosen to take longer to get to the deeper issues and to really communicate well and to be open and honest with each other. And it's, this is how long discourse takes. And I just want to thank them for being so open and so honest and true to their values and beliefs that it is an amazing thing. This is the deepest thing that I have ever participated in, in a community with strangers. And it's interesting because when you spend these many hours with somebody on a meeting, you usually tend to know them and you're kind of friendly. Zoom is very different. We've spent hours with these people and I still don't feel that I really know them in person. I think there's something about bodies being in the same physical space that is so important. So when we all kind of bridge that divide, it says a lot. And so this committee, if anyone on the committee is listening, thank you. We all are on gratitude and I think we're in gratitude for each other. And so yes, I see Director Sheffield clapping as well. And yes, Director De La Cruz. So thank you. You will be hearing more about this very soon. Okay. There is no CSBA report tonight. And we are moving on to E items. I want you to notice it is 6:22 PM. All right, we are going to start with E1, which is an action item. It's a resolution to recognize September 15th to October 15th as Latinx Heritage Month. And I believe Director Medina will be presenting this one.
Thank you, thank you very much. Well, being Latinx myself, this is very important to me. Just some quick history, you know, 1968, during the heart of civil rights and for me, the Chicano movement, Hispanic Heritage Week started in the week of September 15th, being a period of time that the United States was very Mexocentric. It was an important week and September 15th is an important date because there's many independent state festivals that occur on September 15th and then Mexico, September 16th. And that week became very important. 20 years later, 1988, Hispanic Heritage Week becomes Hispanic Heritage Month at the national level. And it goes from September 15th through October 15th, a 30-day period. But that October day is also important because October 12th is what's recognized as Dia de la Raza, which we now also recognize here per our resolution last week as Indigenous Peoples' Day. Very important to the contributions of Latinx cultures, our indigenous roots as well. And I think recognizing all the contributions and the culture that comes from from that mix of all those various civilizations is really important. There's a lot of important history and contributions that occur. And our nation as a whole, in the resolution you'll see, per figures in 2018, about 18 million children under 18 are of Hispanic heritage or Latinx heritage. And that's one-third of the population. And so looking forward, you see a growth in the people that are going to be part of the electorate and part of the vote. But one of the things that I really wanted to highlight is that a lot of the Latinx heritage community aren't citizens, don't have the right to vote. But there's a lot of ways that people can get involved in participating in the electoral process. One group that I'd like to highlight is the Latinx Student Congress of Sonoma County. Obviously, students under 18, they can't vote, but they're engaged in reaching out to voters, getting, they focus on precincts to have low voter turnout and call people, encourage them to register to vote and encourage them to get into elections. But I encourage this for everybody, whether Latinx or not, to get involved in having your voice represented, whether you're able to vote or not, as part of Latinx Heritage Month in recognition of the deep roots of movement towards change and to providing equity in our community, for the Latinx community that as we've seen with COVID and with many other things are unrepresented. And right now, especially with the fires, one thing that I'm seeing a lot is the impact on our farm worker community, a large portion of which is Latinx. And it's important that we make sure that we speak out for them and we advocate for them to make sure that their needs are met. I think it's all really critically important, especially right now. And in recognition of Latinx Heritage Month, I ask that everybody take that into consideration. And so with that, I present the resolution and hope that we all support it and pass it.
Thank you, Director Medina. Board members, are there any questions? At this time now, we will take public comment.
So we are asking for public comment on item E1, the resolution recognizing Latinx Heritage Month. Please raise your hand if you would like to comment on item E1. And we have our new digital timer to tell you when your three minutes are up. I see one hand raised at this time. Amy Bowen?
Hello. I made an error and didn't raise my hand sufficiently for the non-agenda items. May I speak on that now or have I lost my chance?
Unfortunately, Amy, we're in the agenda items now, but you're welcome to send an email to the superintendent's office.
Of course.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amy, appreciation. All right, no other comments? I don't see any. Moderator?
No other hands raised.
All right. So this is on the table. Do we have any discussion? Call for the motion?
I'd like to move to approve resolution number 20202112 to recognize September 15th to October as Latinx Heritage Month.
One second.
All right, great. So Medina, that was moved by Director Manieri and seconded by Director Medina. May we have that real call vote, please?
Director Lopez?
Aye.
Director Manieri?
Aye.
Director Medina?
Aye.
Director De La Cruz?
Aye.
Director Sheffield?
Aye.
Director McCormick?
Aye.
President Fong?
Aye. Thank you very much. That passes. Director Medina, thank you, good job. All right. We're moving on to item E2. This is discussion item, Child Nutrition Services Update.
Thank you, President Fong. We fire it over to Deputy Superintendent Edson. Yes, you're going to hear me once again sing the praises of the Child Nutrition Services Department, every single one of the people within that department, including Director Ed Burke. Instead of just saying, you know, Ed Burke's so great and he's so wonderful, which he is, what I am going to say, and I hope you can hear me, Ed, is that this man truly loves feeding people. And he will go to any length in any discovery and any research to find out how he can do that while maintaining a budget, serving delicious and healthy and trying to find local food. I can't tell you what a pleasure it is to be able to have someone on our team that loves to come to work, that loves to do the work and loves hummus. No, I mean, just truly is such a wonderful, I mean, honestly, Ed, you are, you're going to have, you're going to like use this against me at some point because I just can't stop singing your praises. So I said it, I did it. Somehow, some way, when we're all back in person, you're going to get a big giant parade or, I don't know, party or something because you deserve it for feeding so many children and families, no matter what their circumstances were. So thank you, Ed. And I turn it back to you.
Good evening, President Fong, members of the board, Superintendent Kiramura. Medina, if we could turn on screen sharing, please. Appreciate it. Tonight, along with Mr. Ed Burke, who is our Director of Child Nutrition Services, we'd like to provide an update on what's going on with food services and how the impact that not only Ed, but his entire staff have had on our own students, students in our feeder districts and our community as we're able to provide meals during this time period. We'll also talk about meal applications, where we're at and the progress that we've made in just a couple of short weeks through the outreach efforts of both CNS staff and with the help of school site staff making phone calls on a daily basis, trying to make sure that students are able to receive the meals that they need. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Burke to go through his presentation. And we'll be happy to answer questions at the end of the slideshow.
All right, well, thank you very much for having us. We are very excited, as always, to share our good work and to communicate what our needs are. So to begin with, I want to begin and end each of our presentations with a note of gratitude. For us, I want to really thank our CNS team. They fed kids during a pandemic. There was a lot of fear, a lot of uncertainty, definitely some concerns throughout this whole. throughout this whole thing, and they came to work anyway, to feed kids during a pandemic. And I am so proud and honored to work with these folks every day. So I want to give them a shout out. Really couldn't dump this without them, and they give me strength in everything that I do. So, thank you. And so the next thing that we're going to be chatting about is safety. Safety is in everything that we do under normal circumstances. And in a COVID world, all the more so. So in addition to our return to school specific requirements for safety, we also have some occupationally specific training that we've undergone with all of our staff. We are keeping our staff together in cohorts. So this is a small team. They work together, they take breaks together to minimize interactions with each other and potentially people in the public. And lastly, we have mandated that everyone at pickup sites has to wear a mask. We do have alternatives available if someone has difficulty wearing a mask, but we will, without a very clear mandate, we require everyone to wear a mask at pickup. But as I said, alternatives are available upon request. Typically, it's, hey, go over here and pick it up off a bench, so that way there's no one in your proximity when you come out of your car, which is fantastic. We also have some very exciting news for you. We had a reversal in the USDA's position on offering free meals for kids, which is incredible. Really, this is very exciting news. So from August 31st until December 31st, all children ages 18 and younger can eat for free. Just show up. We have some processes, but this is really exciting. It increases access to meals for kids. And this is tremendous. The caveat is it's December 31st or until the funding runs out. And so there is a concern that we may not make it to December 31st. And then we have to return to students having to have a meal application on file. So we are going to continue to ask families to fill out meal applications at this time. We are currently in 100% distance learning, and as such, we are using a drive-through, grab-and-go meal model. So every week, students get five breakfasts and five lunches. When we started, we were offering a daily offering, which was okay. In April, we transitioned to a twice-a-week model. So you pick up on Mondays for two days, Wednesdays for three. And what we noticed was more people showed up for the Wednesday pickups. And so we made determination in June that we were going to transition to a once-a-week distribution. And we found that that was 100% the right thing to do. We saw an increase of over 1,000 bundles per week when we moved to a once-a-week model. We worked with our food bank friends so that there would be a food distribution and school meals all in one stop. And families really responded well to this about the safety of having to make one stop, about the reduced resource cost for families to get these free meals. And we knew straight away, okay, once a week is the needs of our community the best. During the summer, we worked with our friends over at the Revampire Food Bank, and we increased school sites by 20. So we had 20 additional sites that we were offering meals from, which enabled us to increase the access, increase the convenience, and reduce the resource cost in picking up meals. And that again has been tremendously helpful. Now that USDA is offering to allow us to serve free meals to everyone under the age of 18 again, we intend to resume service at these sites to increase access, increase participation, and decrease resource cost. So this is very, very exciting news. We also recognize that having a distribution in the middle of the day only was somewhat limiting. And so we've expanded our meal service from six to before school at 6:45 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. at all of our distribution sites. And we have evening distributions at select school sites from 4:30 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. And we will, of course, continue our midday service. All of our midday services line up with a food bank distribution, with the exception of Viola. And this increases the access to meals, increases more resources to families. And I have to say, the before-school evening service is a very long day, but it is deeply, deeply rewarding. We even expanded a meal service with very little notice because we were calling folks and they told us, hey, I need something in this part of town. And I need it to be after 5 o'clock because that's when I get out of work. What do you have for us? And we were able to expand meal service at Brook Hill to meet that need, which has been tremendous. So we recognize that a lot of folks are going to have much more access at this time because we've expanded these meal service times, which is tremendous. So in that same vein, we're talking about meal apps. So we have meal application support at all of our distribution points. All of our staff, they are bilingual, they know what to do, they're happy to help. And really, no one leaves without a offer of support. So when a family comes up, we check in, hi, my name's Ed. Do you have any kids? What schools do your kids go to? Do you have an application on file? Oh, you don't? No problem. Let's go chat over here and we're going to get you hooked up in 10 minutes, and then you're done for the whole year. And I have to say, of all the amazing things that our team has done this school year, this is the most significant and impactful thing. Families are feeling a bit anxious, a little bit nervous, what do I have to do? And our staff with love in their heart are really just saying like, hey, we're here together, we're a community, we're going to help you with this, and you're going to be great in 10 minutes. And I have to say, about 99% of the folks that come through already qualify or get an application right then and there. And it's been tremendous. And you know, the best part is these applications only take about 10 minutes. So 10 minutes, you got your groceries for a week if you stop at the midday. You've got meals for your kids and you're set with free meals for the whole school year, more than likely. So stop on by, visit us, we're happy to help. Which segues really nicely into our meal app outreach, and that's where we talk about what's up our slides so far. We are doing pretty well in terms of our applications so far, but there is a lot of work to do. The amount of meal apps we've gotten so far is 6,600. And for reference, last year in total, the entire school year, we received 7,400. So we are very much outpacing where we were last year. That said, we do have 1,500 students or so that applied last year for benefits that have not applied this year. These are folks that really we are targeting, we're reaching out to, we want to check in with a phone call. Hey, what's going on? How are you doing? Let's do this thing together over the phone or come visit us at our meal distribution centers, and we're going to get you squared away. That said, this year, we have identified that, okay, emails don't quite work, letters may not be enough. The real thing that we're missing is a human interaction. It's someone who's going to listen to your unique concerns and address them with you. And so we've done a lot of calls and outreach, parent square posts, emails, social media. We've gone everywhere, everywhere and every way. And hands down, the most meaningful part of this is the one-to-one phone calls. We have been able to contact parents who really didn't know how to connect with us or had a question that they felt they weren't sure how to address. And even just the question of where can I get meals today is being addressed straight away. And so I really want to give a shout out of appreciation to office staff, family engagement workers, teachers who are putting links to meal distribution stuff in their classroom links. We love that. Thank you. Admin staff who are just on it with the message every day at their site, leading the charge. And our CNS staff who really just jumped at the chance and said, I want to support all of our families. I want to do this great work. I'm seeing some notes in the chat. I was on KSRO. We've done some really fantastic work during outreach. But, and this is the call to action, there is much more to do. I want to make contact with every single household in the district. And so we're asking folks, even if you know you do not qualify for free meals, apply anyway. It takes 10 minutes. Your information is 100% confidential. And it takes you off of our call list forever. No more emails, no more phone calls. We're done. So please, apply. That frees us up to call on parents that need that extra support so that we can really say, you need a little bit of support on the phone, let's contact you. So for more information, please go to srcschools.org/needles. And that's going to be the entire package. It's where meals are, it's how to get a meal app in. It's everything you need in the one spot. So srcschools.org/needles. And you'll find that on the slide there where it says online. Stop by, come visit with us, and we'd love to connect with you. Which brings me to one of my things that we're very excited about. We had an opportunity to work with the California Department of Social Services to get folks signed up for free and reduced-priced meals, which then qualified them for additional benefits from the state called PEBT or Pandemic EBT. So children who qualified for free or reduced-priced meals, who applied for this program as well, would receive up to $365 in addition to all their benefits that they're currently getting, which is amazing. As part of this drive, we really, we pushed for so many meal applications very late last school year and early into this one so that we can get as many people signed up and as many people the benefits that they need to be able to support their families. And it has been tremendous and really just one of those feel-good moments when some of the emails is back or texts us back and says, hey, I just got my card. I'm going to go buy some groceries. Thank you. Like, that's an incredible feeling. And so we really, again, we want to push these meal apps because these opportunities may come back up again. And if you're already on the books, then you will get more funding in those programs. So please, 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 sign up for the meal app today. 10 minutes. We can do this together. And so we do want to talk about the financial impact of COVID-19. We lost a significant, like really significant amount of income during the school closure. We served a lot of meals, which was terrific, but we also lost out on also local sales, contract sales, and reimbursable meals that we typically serve during that period. So to sustain our program, we have applied to be able to offer one more meal called the supper, a snack, and a produce pack, which is about 30 pounds of proteins and vegetables and fruits that we would be able to offer families, which, when we do so, will help us sustain our mission of feeding kids and be more and have less encroachment upon the general fund. And so we also want to talk about our charge policy. Our charge policy is with the idea of adult-to-adult communication as the only way of communicating where we're at with our account status or eligibility. Given that that is the norm at our distributions, we have amended our charge policy, which really stipulates that we will only allow one bundle to be charged at one time. This is when folks show up and they're not quite sure, maybe I'm not sure what my spouse's income is, I'll get back to you next week. We got you. So again, we offer support at the time of pickup to everyone who's picking up a meal to prevent any kind of a charge because one bundle is five days of breakfast and five days of lunch. That's $26. That is a substantial charge. And we want to support, provide any support we can at pickup. So let's fill out an application. Let's get this thing going. We're here to support you. It's 10 minutes. Let's do it together. And last but not least, when we return to school, we are going to be meeting county guidelines. We're going to be using a contactless service. And we're going to have grab-and-go bundles for each day students are not on campus. And this is when we're in distance learning hybrid. So in the future, hopefully the near future, we will have everything set up so that families are safe, students are safe, and we continue to have great food. And coming to our slide, I really want to end this presentation with a gratitude to our partners. Revampire Food Bank, we love what y'all do. This picture here is one of the early successes. On the first day that we've worked with Food Bank at Monroe Elementary, we served 402 bundles. Relative to the week, a couple of days before, we were serving maybe 200. So we doubled our counts, courtesy of Food Bank. We love y'all. Keep up that great work. We also want to thank our partner districts. And last but not least, the SRCS community. That's all of you. Without you, none of this would have happened. We love the support. We love that you're bumping our message and talking to your friends and neighbors about what's available to them. This has been really tremendous, and we want to give a big shout out, a great thank you. And with that, I'll move to questions.
Thank you.
I will say this, Ed. Calm, cool, collected, detail-oriented, and truly the moral imperative to feed, feed the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Board members have questions? I see Director De La Cruz and Director Medina.
Thank you so much, Director Burke. This is so exciting. I wanted to just do a shout out for the ways in which I hear you really taking into consideration community feedback and pivoting to the need and to the way our community is behaving with regard to these resources and your reliance on data. So like, just yay to all of those things. Thank you so much. One of the things that I wondered is the EBT program, is that available for families who are undocumented? Or like, or who have mixed-status families? And does that at any rate, is at any point go to the public charge? And do we have information about kind of that impact to families within SRCS?
I love that question. Any opportunity we can to answer questions about public charge is near and dear to my heart. We want people to feel comfortable and safe. So the short answer is, the PEBT program is entirely through California State, so it is not part of public charge. The period has closed as of July 15th. However, we are hopeful that they will bring it back. So PEBT is separate from typically what's called PEBT or CalFresh, which is federally funded and may be interpreted as public charge. So what I would ask is anyone who is at all concerned about public charge, to start, school meals not part of public charge, come on by. Your information is totally confidential. Stay with us, your family, come on over. And so for folks that are thinking about, hey, what about SNAP? What about other programs that may be in public charge? Give us a call. We work with the Food Bank and the County Department of Social Services, and we will help you find a solution. So give us a call. We'll talk about your unique circumstances and make some great referrals because we want you to feel supported and welcome. Thank you.
Director Medina.
Yeah, so following up on that, that was kind of what my question was related to. With the pandemic EBT, I think I recall hearing that the cards are issued in the name of the student. Is that correct?
I believe so, yeah.
And then if so, my understanding would be that the amount is based on the family size. So I'm curious, in cases where there's multiple students in a household, do they each get a card? And is that household amount divided amongst the three, or how does that work?
That's a great question. So my understanding is they may or may not send a card for each student that's enrolled in that school. So if I had, for example, if I had three children, I may receive three cards or I may receive the full value for the three children on my card. And that would be for students that are enrolled in the school that qualify for the free and reduced meals. So unfortunately, if I had a younger student, say three years old, that was not enrolled in school, they would not unfortunately get those benefits.
And the other question, it's, and it's only the people that aren't receiving CalFresh, correct?
I don't believe there is a restriction on being a participant in CalFresh. I believe it is in addition to not necessarily competing program. But that is a fantastic question. I will do some research to verify it, and we will publish that. So if PEBT comes back around, we will include that as incentive to apply.
I think I had read that it was for people that weren't already receiving CalFresh, but yeah, clarification would be great. Thank you.
That'd be wonderful. Yeah.
President Fong, I wonder, I froze before I could finish my second question.
Sorry.
I missed the tail end of Director. I missed the tail end of Director. The director's response, but my, my follow up was just also to remind us all that we have an amazing resource in the Sonoma County Secure Families Collaborative. To refer immigrant families for high quality legal advice with more complicated questions and. And those folks are always on call for institutions that also support immigrant families. And so I just wanted to remind folks that that is a super important resource. For these tough legal questions that immigrant families have to face on top of everything else. So again, thank you, Director Burke, for really taking an opportunity to make sure that. All families feel comfortable having these conversations with our, with our schools and super grateful for your work. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to ask you to repeat that again when we go back to discussion. Okay, Director De La Cruz, just that name and reference. I don't see any other hands for questions and I'm going to, it's public comment time on this. Moderator, do we have any public comments?
So to officially call for public comment, this is item E two. Discussion item on child nutrition services. If you'd like to comment, please raise your hand at this time. And there are no hands raised.
All right, board members, do we have any discussion comments on item E two? Director McCormick.
I just want to say out loud to Director Burke that and his entire staff and team. This is absolutely incredible work that you've done here. We've been getting updates every week through the whole summer about how many thousands of meals that you have provided. And I just want you to know that your hard work definitely doesn't go unnoticed and it's. It's incredible. And in a time when everybody is struggling just to take care of themselves and their own. You are completely 100% focused on serving thousands of people in our community in a time of great need and. That leadership and service is commendable and outstanding and. I just thank you so much for what you're doing and I'm excited to see how you continue to do it and I know this is just. Going to make all of our nutrition and food services in this district from this point on even better and. I just thank you for your leadership and your service. It's absolutely incredible. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
I see no other hands. All right. So that was a discussion item. Thank you again, Director Burke and Deputy Assistant Superintendent Dogg, Rick Edson. We have, we are going to take a short little break to change interpreters and. When we come back, we are going to be moving to just to item E four. We have pulled item. E three due to an unexpected medical situation. So let's do an interpreter change.
All right, I'm ready, Adina.
Okay, thank you, Dan.
And if we could promote Joel Dante during the break, please.
We are all setting.
All right. Thank you, everyone. All right. We are moving on with item E four. It's an action item. It's the 2019, 2020 unaudited actuals.
I'll turn it over to Deputy Superintendent Edson.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the board. Tonight, Joel Dante and I will be presenting the unaudited actuals for the 2019, 20 school year. This is one of the many steps in the annual budget process. By closing the books for that year in preparation for our financial audit. For the last school year. With this, we'll give an overview of where we ended up compared to our 45 day budget revision. In many cases with the, with the brief presentation. Important to note still, there is still uncertainty in California school funding. We talked in the last couple of board presentations that we expect to be. Expect there to be information from Sacramento regarding. The California State Budget Update based on tax revenues in the recent weeks. Excuse me. I have not heard anything substantial that would change the outlook right now, other than maybe some relief. From borrowing money for deferrals in the springtime. But as more information comes in, we'll continue to monitor that and update the board. With, with these updates as they come to us. With that, I'm going to share my screen and turn the presentation over to Joel Dante to talk about our unaudited actuals. With that, Mr. Dante.
All right. Thank you, Rick. So the unaudited actuals are particular to the. Year we just finished, 2019, 20. And every report since last June. We've been reporting on estimates and budget numbers. So now tonight. We are presenting the actual final numbers that for the first time we're seeing these. So these are, so every report is revenues. And expenditures and then ending fund balance. So the 2019, 20. Unaudited actuals are all the revenues expenditures that were revenues that were, that were earned. And expenditures based on goods and services that were received between July 1, 2019. And June 30, 2020. So we've tallied all those up, accounted for all those. And we put them into this actual report and the report will go over the actual numbers and it will touch on. What our budgeted and estimated. Projections were compared to those actuals. So Rick, if you want to go to the first. Report, we'll take a look, we're going to start looking at revenues. So here you can see it revenues. So we've got a number of different revenue line items. We've broken up into. Four main summary areas. The first one is the LCF revenues. This is our largest revenue source. It makes up over 80% of our revenues. It is for all of our base, basic services, our operational services. The other categories are predominantly federal, state and local grants. And restricted kind of funding that we get. So you can see the first is the LCF revenue. We ended the year with actual revenues of, you know, a little over $144 million. And that was a difference of $22,000 over the whole, over our estimate to our actuals. So. This can be a stressful report for someone like me, but I'm proud to say I'm presenting this fairly. Stress free, we'll get into the some of the, some of the, you know, particulars, but that's, I think that's a pretty good. Budget that we can rely on. And this is what our actual, ending actual revenue came in. Now, the other. Federal, state and local revenues, like I mentioned, they're based on a lot of grants and there's a, the grants can be. You know, the estimates are based on what you're awarded and you'll see the. Kind of the similar pattern in the expenditures. Then at the end of the year, when we identify what's been expensed, then we. Identify what we've earned. So you can see in federal revenue, we did have a decrease in revenue of about $2.2 million. That is predominantly due to our title programs, our federal title programs that due to COVID. We were, you know, the, those services, we weren't really able to invest those expenditures. Now, if you recall in the 45 day budget, we had. Identify those services and we talked about how the federal government has issued a flexible funding waiver. So we're able to carry that money over and you'll see that kind of. Come forward in, as we moved in the expenditures and the ending fund balance. And the other state revenue, the other component of these revenues and one of the. Actual final reports is we've got to identify our STIRS liability. And so that's one thing, and you probably remember this from last year's report. So our, we, our liability, we budgeted about $7 million. This one came in about $2.9 million over that. When we got our actual STIRS liability report from the C D E. So then other local revenue, there was a delta of about 295,000. That was from local revenue donations. And there was some revenue that. We were expecting from some local things that didn't come quite to what we estimated, but overall, we had about a $437,000 delta in revenues. But I think that the one that really will impact our ending fund balance, our unassigned, unappropriated balance, balance is the LCF sources. So. That, that kind of is a summary of the. Results of the unaudited actual report for revenues. We can move on to expenditures now. So here we're going, we're seeing expenditures and again. You're going to see some restricted revenues that are going to move into, you know, non-spent and then we'll. Move that revenue into the ending fund balance. You'll see that next. But we did have some savings in, in our unaudited actuals report. Some certificate salaries. We didn't end up spending as much overtime, I mean, uh, extra duty and. Some we had budgeted throughout the year. So we saw some savings there. Same with some of the classified salaries. Here, you're seeing that benefits. Amount increase. That's the same scenario as the revenue that increased in other state local revenue. That's just identifying our final. STIRS allocation. There was a little bit of increased cost when it was all said and done in some of our healthcare benefits. If you call, we did have a fairly. Healthy negotiated settlement with some benefits, but I think that the, the expenditures are. Fairly within reason. We ended the year with about a 1% difference in our budget to our actual expenditures. So Rick, I think we can move on. So, so what does that mean? Well. You can see we ended off the year. So we, we, when, when final revenues were compared to final expenditures. You know, our ending balance was the difference of about $4.2 million. But what are the components of that ending balance? As you can see, the restricted ending balance that was pro, was projected about 2.3. Finished the year out about $4.8 million. So that's where that, you saw some of the revenues come down. You saw some of the expenditures come down. You see this restricted ending balance increase to north of almost two point, a little over $2.4 million. Then the other component of our ending fund balance is our reserve for economic uncertainty. Remember. Other than the restricted ending balance, we have to have a minimum reserve of 3%. For economic uncertainty. So this is that 3%, that $5.7 million. Because of the. Change in our actual expenditures, it actually came down about $55,000. So after that. Is our unassigned, unappropriated amount. So throughout the budget and through the. 45 day revise, we are projecting to come in about $11.2 million. Because some of those increased revenues and the savings in the end, in the expenditures in the end, we actually saw an increase to our reserve. As a result of the year end, unaudited actuals 2019, 20 report of an increase to that ending fund balance. About $1.8 million, which is good. We can now reduce that out of the future fiscal stabilization measure. It helps us. We still have a lot of work to do and that is the summary of the 2019, 20 unrestricted, I mean, I'm sorry, 2020 unaudited actuals report. For the general fund. So now let's move into all the other funds. Again, all those other funds, we have. Projective revenues, expenditures, and then after we've actually calculated, you know, we've accounted for all those. Revenue expenditures, we come up with an ending fund balance. You can see. In our charter reserve, in our charter funds, which is all of our four charter schools are rolled up into this one special reserve fund. So again, we had our estimate that we were going to come out with about. Little over $4 million and we ended up coming out with a little over $4 million. We actually. Ended up spending, you know, revenues versus expenditures was down by about $32,000 versus $4 million. Fund 12 is our, is our childcare fund, I mean, our preschool. Preschool program. That's our state contract preschool program. So this is just a little interest that floats in that fund. We. But we, for the most part, we contract this program out to North Bay Children's Center and the revenues we get are spent by them. So here's the. Special, the cafeteria fund. So like Ed said in his, in his wonderful presentation. Last year was a little tough. We got, you know, throughout the year, the state covered us for our operating services as far as teachers and classified staff. Through ADA. You know, they ended up. Shortening the period of ADA and full, giving us full funding in that method, in that matter. However, we made cafeteria funding based on food sales. So we weren't able to. Provide those food sales. However, the way we paid for that deficit was through the learning loss mitigation funding that we got north of $13 million. So we sent that, so we moved some expenditures out of the cafeteria into that funding. We were able to. Keep that program at a zero ending balance. And we still have some of that, you know, we're, we're planning the rest of those expenditures with that learning loss mitigation funds, but that was. That was a really blessing for us to be able to do that. Then our deferred maintenance fund came in about $14,000. Difference from estimates. Our fund 17 came about $2,000. Our bond fund. So there was some building work. I think we can. Can we communicate a little more of the building fund? It came up with. A little higher reserve than we anticipated, but I think there was some projects that moved out of the fiscal year, some projects, some billing that'll move into July. Then our, our developer fees, our capital development fees, that's where we collect. School impact fees from commercial and residential development. We came in a little lower than, and we, we, we made some expenditures out of that fund and we, we came in a little lower revenues, but this is. Ending balance. And then our school facilities fund 35, we, we zeroed that fund out. This is, this is a fund that we use. It's, it's, it's the building, the fund 21 is what we use to build bond projects. If we want, if we decide to get a state bond, a state funded bond, then it's. Ran through that fund 35. So we don't have any state bond program. So we zeroed that account. Then our fund 40, this is, so every year we get a couple of different things. One thing we get in this fund is we get an RDA. Based on our property taxes from the county and they say move that into a restricted fund for facilities use. So. That's one of the components that affected the ending balance of fund 40. And then our insurance fund. So if you recall, our insurance fund. We kicked up the benefit by, I think, 1,500 or two. So we've been closely monitoring this program. I think because of COVID, I think there was a lot of people that didn't end up going to the dentist and utilizing this program. Remember this ending balance for both the charter fund and the self insurance fund, we're going to use some of that ending reserve in 2021. As our fiscal stabilization plan. So I think we, we, we. Included taking $1 million out of self insurance fund, but now we ended with about $888,000 above projections in that self insurance fund. So. We'll be able to, you know, take a closer look at that in the future. So with that, your internet connection is unstable. Uh oh, my internet connection is unstable. Does everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Well, so that, so now with that, that wraps up the 2019, 20 unaudited actuals report.
So, so before we turn it back over to the board for questions, I just want to note on the fund 21. Joel was correct. Most of our summer projects, the majority of billing has not been completed. And we'll be booked in the 2021 school year. With that, the first interim report will bring back in, excuse me, bring back in December. To talk about where we're at at that point. Along with a fiscal stabilization plan with work by staff and the reconvening of the budget advisory committee between now and then. Advisory Committee between now and then. And then we'll also be bringing back the full 2019-20 audit report for acceptance by the board as well. With that, we'll turn it back over to the board for any questions.
Thank you, Director Dantos. Questions from board members? I will say that was a very clear explanation. Thank you so much. No questions?
Director Sheffield.
Director Sheffield.
Thank you. Thank you, Joel. That really was a very clear explanation of where we stand. I'm just wondering, and I know Deputy Superintendent Edson, that there's a lot of unknowns that we don't know, but I'm wondering about if any foreseeing potential impacts on us or in California, if that 11 billion trigger cuts that was tied into the state budget back in June goes into effect. My understanding is the trigger happens on October 15th and that there is significant cuts to schools, 6 billion of deferred spending to schools. I don't know how that translates to us. Do you have any sense?
Yeah, I don't have the numbers in front of me, Director Sheffield, but I know that Joel and I went through cash flow extensively, looking at what we would have to take out in terms of trans loans during the deferral process. We're hopeful that that does not happen. I believe the number, Director Sheffield, is 6.8 billion
6.8.
Cut to education. We're hoping we'll get more, I'll say, concrete news as we go forward, especially with California tax returns that came in in July with, they're expected as they were higher than projected. And we know that there are still some federal funding issues that we have to monitor as well that could impact California in some of the education funding. So as noted, we are closely monitoring that for impact. Obviously, any additional cuts that we take increase not only our budget this year, or decrease our budget this year, but also increase the fiscal stabilization measures that would be necessary in your two and three of our multi-year projection in order to be fiscally solvent by definition of the state of California.
Okay, my understanding is that Senator Mitch McConnell has vowed to take up some type of action on this next round of COVID relief this week. You know, so this is my pitch, is that everybody send a message to Mitch McConnell and say, you know, how badly we need this. California is waiting. You know, we know where our representatives stand for the state of California, but it needs to, the message really needs to go to the rest of the country as well. Anyway, that's all that I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Sheffield. Other questions, board members? Director Medina?
Yeah, I wasn't clear on two things. Well, first off, with the other state revenues and federal revenues, is there, are there still funds, I think, might have been from CARES Act or the one before, that we were potentially waiting on? I don't know if that would be coming to the state or something.
So we do have a number of different learning loss mitigation funds that we are getting from the state. That's all accounted for, and we've included that in our budget report, some of our information. Are you saying are there any other?
Yeah, anything that wasn't accounted there. So it sounds like it's already accounted there, right?
Yeah, we've taken, and there are quite a few, there's quite a few of the learning loss mitigation COVID expenditures included in the 2019-20 budget. There is. I mean, predominantly, most of it is spent in 2021, but there is, you know, a good amount in the 1920 budget and ending actuals.
And when you were talking about the STIRS liability, I wasn't sure if you were, if I missed, if you said that was something that we were still waiting on or that was impacting the figures that were presented there.
No, so that was final. So we start off the year with a budget on that. I think we budgeted about $7 million. And then at the end of the year, we get information from CDE through SCO. SCO gives us a year-end close pack, and it says, okay, here's your year-end actual STIRS liability based on retirees. Like now, I think last year, we had a number of retirees that entered the program or turned 65 or, you know, so at the end of the year, STIRS will calculate that. They'll give each school district through their county office of education their actual STIRS liability number. And it's, so it's a method for the state to track all the cumulative districts by having them report that in their individual end of the year financial report.
Thanks. Yeah, I just didn't catch it, so thank you. Appreciate it. And just final, again, like everybody said, really good job, clear, concise, easy to understand. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And my apologies, Joel. Executive Director Fiscal, Joel Dantos.
No problem.
All right, this is an action item, and we are going to be taking public comments. Moderator, do we have any public comments on this?
So if you'd like to comment on E4, please raise your hand at this time. And there are no hands raised.
Board members, I turn it back to us for any discussion before we make a motion or a call for the motion. Director McCormick?
I would just like to say thank you, Director Dantos, and I would like to make a motion to approve our 2019-20 unaudited actuals.
I second.
So that was a motion by Director McCormick and seconded by Director De La Cruz, who I heard first. Medina, may we have that vote, please?
Director Lopez.
Aye.
Director McCormick.
Aye.
Director De La Cruz.
Aye.
Director Muniere.
Aye.
Director Sheffield.
Aye.
Director Medina.
Aye.
President Fong.
Aye, thank you. Thank you very much. Joel?
Thank you.
All right. We are moving to the last discussion item tonight. It is the Board of Education's review of a self-evaluation and Diane, are you prepared to share that on a screen? Do you have that for us?
I can.
So before we share that, I'll just say that we agreed as a board that we, as a governing, as a governing body, it behooves us to, actually, as board policy, that we need to be evaluating ourselves. we have the results. And there are eight board members, and we have six board members who have taken this so far. And Dr. Kedemora, can we still take that? We can still take that, right?
Yeah, yes. This just represents the six responses, however.
And the other thing I think we talked about is that we weren't sure about the questions, if we even thought that these questions or all the questions were appropriate for us or if we were understanding the questions. So as we go through these initial answers and responses for ourselves, that I'd like to take some feedback on these questions as well. I know I have one question that I am not even clear on myself, and I put it in. So let's, I think we're going to have discussion through the whole thing, not just do all the questions and then review it. I think we'll do our self-evaluation in public as we go through things, and then we'll take public comment, and then we'll finish it up. It is only a discussion. And if you have something to say, you're going to have to like make some noise or something because I can't see everybody anymore. All right, so.
I don't know if we have anybody on the telephone, but, or the phone. This is the first question. The board packet of supporting and background materials is sufficiently comprehensive with the appropriate level of detail to prepare the board to discuss and make decisions on agenda items.
Okay, I don't know what anybody else is saying, but I'm seeing a blank white screen, Diane.
Yeah, same here.
Me too.
Oh, my screen is paused. Why? Why? Let me try it again. Why is my screen paused? That's never happened before. How dare someone pause my screen?
There we go. I'll let you be in charge of the scrolling.
Okay. I read the first question, and then here are the ratings.
And we had a question about, this wasn't about us, the board members, this is really about the board packet presented to us by you and Admin. so six people took this. It was, four people were agree or strongly agree. Well, all six agree or strongly. Any comments?
Yeah, I was going to say, I think also, I think it also related to the fact that the packets that were presented with are also in large part what's available to the public. And so in terms of how we're doing as a board, ensuring that that information is adequate for the public to see is kind of how this question related to, I think. So I think, you know, it seems like we agree that it's good information. But in terms of our accountability to the public, it's good that good information is out there.
I agree. All right, so I don't see anybody, I can't see you all, so just have to speak up, people. Question, and these are the comments. I don't understand the SSS part. I think that-
I was hissing at you guys. No, that was me testing it. But I deleted my ratings so that it would just be you guys, but I couldn't erase the comment, so.
Okay, so I understand it because you didn't always use S. Sometimes you use you. All right. I think we can move on to question two. I asked sufficient questions of the superintendent, staff, and other stakeholders to prepare me to understand staff presentations at the board meetings. I take the time to learn about important issues facing schools to increase my contextual knowledge. And that was actually four, five, or agree or strongly agree, and one was neither agree
I have comment about the board members to this one. When you have a question, I feel that you all feel comfortable in calling me, texting me, emailing me if you have a question. If I have a question, I feel extremely comfortable in calling or texting or whoever I need to talk to about an item or all of you, you know, whatever the case may be. So, yeah, I just wanted to say that.
Would you scroll to those comments as well, Diane? Oh, you wrote SSSXX, okay. Should I read these out loud?
I think it's okay.
To read it?
No.
Okay. So I am I'm glad, it feels that everyone feels that they're getting prepared and they're able to ask you. And I want to also tell you, Diane, that we feel that you are, you take the time, you're very, very busy, and you take the time to make sure that the board members are well-informed.
Yeah. It's, I think for a superintendent, any superintendent, it really is a primary factor, the communication between individual board members as a board as well, you know, with me, so.
I understand that, but for a superintendent, everything's a primary factor. Question three is on board preparation as well. The board establishes and maintains a systematic plan for feedback on policies to determine effectiveness, their worth, and whether they need to be amended, modified, or canceled. So four of us voted strongly agree or agree, and two voted neither agree nor disagree.
I'll add on this. I think one of the things that I thought is that the way the question is phrased, a systemic plan, and we don't have, I'd say, a systemic plan for reviewing all of our policies. We address things as they come along, as issues arise, but I don't think there's a systemic plan to be constantly looking at everything. And that might be something that we might want to look at, but we've got a lot of work on our hands. And I think I'm comfortable with where we're at, but in terms of whether agreeing to that question of having a systemic plan, I didn't necessarily agree that we had a systemic plan for that.
Any other comments?
I would say that I agree with Director Medina, but what I'm finding with Medina Flores and my assistant, Medina Flores, and our assembly, that the systems are just waiting for us to start using them. So it's going to eventually come about.
So my comment was the second one. I'm going to go back to it. I'm going to read it out loud. There's room for us to do a better job in evaluating results. I think that we just get in running so fast. Admin, you're running so fast that sometimes we just don't really do that. it would be good for us to spend some time doing that. You know, we spent this much money on something, was it worth those resources? And what are those metrics? And as more, the more that we can do that, I think would be better for all of us.
And I would say to President Fong, I think that that's an excellent point, that staff does struggle with metrics. I'll be very, very transparent about that. And that we are constantly looking how we can do a better job of not just run-of-the-mill metrics such as, you know, participation by parents will increase by 25%. We're done with those kinds of days. The metrics have to be, have much more depth and meaning. And so I want to be transparent from our side that if you see a metric that is not measuring what it is that we should be measuring, or if there's a question, you know, you need to call us out on it, let us know, preferably before the meeting, but yeah, still.
Well, I wouldn't say call you out on it, but-
Well, I don't take that as a negative. What, call me, would you say, Director De La Cruz, call me in?
That's right.
Yeah, call us in.
Board preparation, question four. The board stays aware of its debt limitations and sets priorities based on total financial needs of the system and maintaining an adequate financial reserve. Six out of the six who took it agree or strongly agree. I think this was a very strong yes. We're nailing this one.
That's five to one, right? One disagrees.
Yeah.
You know what? I was having a problem with my printer in terms of color. I had to do a flashlight on the color. Is that green, not blue, right?
It's green.
Okay. Does anyone want to speak to that?
I would maybe venture to say adequate financial reserve, that someone may think that 3% is just kind of scary as a reserve, but that's only a guess, so. Which I shouldn't do, but I feel like that might be the case.
Any board member want to speak to that?
I'll speak to this. I mean, I said agree. But, and yeah, 3% financial reserve is kind of scary. That's kind of the base minimum of what we're required to have. However, I feel very strongly that this board as a governing, as a governance team is very committed to serving our students right now and very committed to trying to increase wages for our staff and our faculty, including benefits. And that is something, you know, full and fair funding, and these are things that we are thinking about. And so, you know, we really, I know- I know I wrote in my comments, I don't, could you scroll, yeah, I think I wrote that we're, you know, we're committed to, we don't want to put our overall budget in danger, and, you know, I'm so thankful that we have Director Dantos and our Assistant Superintendent that do just a great job with the numbers and keeping it real with us and knowing what those things are, and I think we feel very confident that we know what the actual numbers are, but I think we're all in the mindset that we're trying to push to maximize our budget, and so that's why I said agree, but, you know, it is a little nerve-wracking on reserves, especially, you know, this 2020 is unfolding the way it is, I mean, gosh, we just don't know what's around every other corner as far as crisis goes, but I know that I feel very strongly that we need to, you know, just maximize our budget and push the limit as much as we can to get the most bang for our buck, so, that was my response.
And if I could echo, I'm basically there, I feel like, like we're a family living on paycheck to paycheck, but we're trying to, you know, do everything, try to meet our, you know, our goals, and so really balancing like with the limitations that we have, but I think that we're aware of the limitations, and I think that's kind of what the question's about, you know, and so I think we're doing the best, we're doing good, it's hard, it's, I think, I don't think any of us don't stress about the money in terms of trying to get everything we want to accomplish, but I think we are aware and make decisions responsibly around that.
Okay. Let's move on to question five. "This is about board logistics. At least a portion of each meeting was dedicated to an update on key district goals, strategic priorities, or improvement initiatives that have been established by the board." Okay, if I get my colors right. Four were in the agree, one was neutral, and one was disagree.
You got your colors right.
We're kind of all over this one. Any comments or questions?
I think one thing that would be helpful, it's interesting to me, we had a moment at the Board of Supervisors when staff were required to kind of connect the dots back to a board priority in our board items, and I was always struck by kind of the clarity of, you know, this work fits in this bucket, this work is connected to furthering this policy, or this, you know, kind of this value essentially, that our electeds had set, and so I'm wondering if there's a way for us to kind of be clear or to receive regular updates on, you know, things that we know the community really cares about, that we get pinged on, and to kind of continue tracking that to our MVP.
And I think too, to add to that, you know, I don't know, maybe I'm losing track of which body this is, but I think maybe in the past, agenda items for the board would be tied to a specific goal, I don't know, it could be a different body than I'm thinking of, but I think it would be interesting to, if we started to add that to board items, what potential priority or goal they fit into, and then maybe in terms of a future assessment, kind of count, like, okay, we had items about this goal this many times, or about this goal that many times, you know, some sort of metric, just to kind of see how we did overall in terms of our agendas, that might be interesting, so, just a thought.
Yeah, I, we can definitely now with the new system, insert how the particular agenda item is tied to the priorities, we can do that.
I think that's a great idea, I really like that idea.
It was in the agendas before we moved to Agenda Online, and there was difficulty in trying to figure out how to make that happen, but again, poor Adina. She's, I have such confidence she'll figure it out, so, you'll be seeing that, that's a good point.
I'm going to ask for, and I'm not saying that it's terrible, I'm saying that there's always room for improvement, that our reports and updates continue to be analytical, and that means evidence. What else could we be doing? I think Ed Burke's report tonight was a great model. All right, we can move on to question six. Oh, I love this one. "Logistics. The board avoids extensive inquiry or debate on non-critical operational or administrative details that should be left to the discretion of the administration and staff." That's a really big color wheel there. I think three people think they were too much into the weeds, one thinks we aren't, and two did not take a stand. Questions?
I think on this one, to me, the line between policy and implementation is always a really critical one, and one thing that struck me about this question in particular was the ways in which sometimes we may make a policy decision that requires some tweaking after attempts to implement, and how much I want to encourage us to be able to kind of remain open and going back and forth across that line, and to avoid, you know, kind of reaching in and getting our fingers and toes in what is clearly staff and superintendent and cabinet work, but I would love for that to be more of a conversation about what else do you need from us after we've kind of made, made a big decision that may be hard, that may need, you know, X, Y, Z, so I just, I, I think that line is a really critical one for us to continue to learn how best and better to respect, but I would love to also invite kind of ongoing conversations about what else you need from us besides policy determinations.
I'm going to chime in that while we shouldn't be in the weeds, sometimes it takes really understanding things to be able to implement, to do policy, so, Director DeLa Cruz, the juxtaposition between, you know, implementation, details, so we understand to make policy, and so I think we just need to be aware of that. Anyone else? All right, let's move on to question seven. We're halfway through, you guys. "In general, board members have adequate opportunity to discuss and understand the impact of decisions before taking action." You can see the answers there. Any questions or any comments?
I, I think, I don't remember if it was something that I said, but I think, just thinking for ourselves as a board, that one thing that I think would, would help in terms of the agenda setting process, maybe when we know things are gonna come up, like, you know, it's gonna be on meeting X, you know, three meetings down, if there's materials and stuff that we could have, like, as far much in advance as possible to allow us even more time, I think it would, it could hurt, you know, if it's stuff that doesn't require extra additional work, just knowing that, you know, we try to plan out our meetings effectively, well timed out, but I think it allows us the opportunity to review materials and then potentially engage with, whether it be staff or community members, to ask more questions as items are gonna come up, so I think that would be helpful.
I will say that I really depend on my fellow board members to help my own thinking, I mean, I know what I think, but I need to know what other people think to help expand my thinking, correct my thinking, deepen my thinking, so I really do appreciate discussion among us.
And I think the other part that, you know, is difficult, when it's interaction amongst us as a board, is of course we have brown acco limitations, I think that makes it hard, but I think just in general, you know, I think this question could be taken in different ways, but in terms of like reviewing and understanding and commenting on stuff, you know, outside of just amongst ourselves, but I think for me, it'd be helpful again, like I said, to try to have more time, because sometimes that short window between the time that items get posted and our meeting, if, let's say we have a really busy weekend, week ahead, it becomes difficult, so whenever the opportunity is to have stuff way in advance, it's great, and it's possible.
And let's move on to the next question, number eight. "The participants in each meeting modeled mutual respect, effective interpersonal communication, and professional behavior. For example, convictions, criticism, concerns are presented in a constructive rather than a confrontational or personalized manner." Pretty positive on this one. Okay, question number nine. "At board meetings, there is at least as much dialogue among members of the board as there are with, as there is with members and staff." Nice color wheel there as well.
Interesting.
Diane? You have a comment?
President Fong, I thought this one was interesting when I saw the comment of pretty much no discourse among trustees, all is with staff, and I don't know who wrote that comment, but I, that was just interesting for me to think about, because it does seem like, you know, we either are talking, kind of addressing the public, or that we're asking or interacting with staff, and that, as I thought about it, I thought maybe we aren't talking as much between, amongst ourselves, and so I just thought that was an interesting comment, because it got me thinking about that, and, you know, a lot of us are, you know, only a couple years into being on the board, and maybe that's something that we need to grow into, or, you know, discuss more amongst ourselves about, you know, how to actually get more discussion happening instead of just a back and forth between staff. So I just thought that was an interesting comment, made me think about it a little bit, and, yeah, I just want to think about that some more and actually encourage more discussion, you know, between the board members themselves in the board meetings. Whoever wrote that, thank you for writing that.
Well, I think to add to that, I think when I think of what that says, and I think of, to me, when I speak, and I'm often speaking, like, maybe it seems like you're speaking to the public, but I mean, I feel that I'm also like speaking to all the board members, right, and so that's my discourse to the trustees, right, and so maybe it's just how we think about it, I don't know what this means, should I say like board number X, you know, this is what I think about what you're saying, or directly addressing board members, so that's just kind of my curiosity around that specific comment.
I'm the one who wrote that comment, and I put this question in, and I'm not sure about this question actually anymore. I think I came from a job where it was really a lot of collaboration, and a lot of discussion, a lot of discourse, a lot of consensus, when we had to make big, big decisions, and so we are making big, big decisions, and it feels like linear speechifying almost, but yet even when I say that, I know that personally I learn from each of you, when you say things, you know, when you're, when you're saying whatever you're saying, I'm learning, and I'm shifting, and so, but I don't respond to you, and then we vote. We vote, which of course has always been something that I really hate, voting, I like consensus, but I think we discuss things, I think I would like us to do more discourse, I think, and Omar, if you're putting something out to the public, and you really are putting it out to everybody, which includes us, all the trustees, me, that works for me too.
I really like the idea of when we're trying to take, like, before we take votes, taking straw votes, and I think that that would allow us kind of an opportunity to say, this is where we are right now, and this is why, and, you know, can you help me, board member X, to get to a different place, or, you know, superintendent, you know, or staff, like, I find that methodology to be really helpful in kind of pulling out where people are earlier on, so that we don't leave it all to the final vote, and that can really help to get at exactly what is holding somebody back, or what is, you know, kind of a sticking point, and it helps us to reach consensus in, you know, and to not necessarily have to just put it all on a, you know, a dramatic moment of a vote, so I'm wondering if that, if that's something that, you know, folks have seen work well, and if that's something that we want to consider, you know, putting into practice with ourselves, and it does, it does, you know, encourage and inspire like slightly more communication and some back and forth conversation.
I second that.
Well, to add to that, I think, you know, the, I think for me, it's like a constant adjustment, because I come from this very parliamentary procedure-like mentality, right, where I'm, I'm used to and expecting that there's a motion, and there's the second, and that's where the conversation's gonna happen, that's where the debate's gonna happen, where we hear, well, I support this, and this is why I'm here, I'm not quite there because of this, and that's like the opportunity for debate to, okay, pull someone in, or to pull someone against, and then we bow either for or against based on the debate that happens, on the conversation on that motion that was made, and that's kind of like my expectation of the motions and how it happens, and so much of how we operate is, like, by the time there's a motion, well, it's just like we're headed to the vote, and so, so that's an adjustment for me, but, you know, I, that's why I'm, I think at times I'm very picky about this parliamentary procedure as a whole, but that's where I expect all that to really happen, and whether it be, you know, everybody's agreement, or people are at extreme, to me, that's okay, because that's part of the debate, that's part of the discourse and the conversation, that's where it happens for me, so this is an adjustment for me, but I've adapted.
Ed?
I just think, you know, I, it's interesting what Allegra brought up, and I've seen it work effectively, in bodies that want to try to avoid debate, and instead have a discussion, because a debate can be intimidating, and when you start to hear from other participating members, that can also be intimidating, especially if it's going against what and how you feel, if you're leaning one way or another, and you're just looking for, you know, reason, you're just looking for- If you're leaning one way or another, and you're just looking for, you know, reason, you're just looking for one or two reasons to, to, to push you to support or to opposition. But you're holding back because you're seeing where other board members are at, where they stand. And I think that, you know, after, and the way that we do things, because we have our, our procedure, our discussion, we cut it off, then we have, you know, and we have a vote, you know? I think there's opportunity that would allow us to fish out a few more things in a more, in a more, I don't want to say respectful, I just, maybe more casual way, instead of the, the formal parliamentary debate system.
I think just, just to add to what you said, Ed, one of the things that I often worry about, and, and you know, and I hope this is the case, is that I feel like when we have hesitations, or we don't know, or we have questions, that I think it's really important that we always take the opportunity to bring it up. I mean, oftentimes, we're going to go, and, and that's, that's when things are happening. And if we have doubts, or we have questions, I think, I know oftentimes we worry about time, or, or maybe, I don't know, whatever. But I'd say just for all of us, don't, don't leave it unasked, don't leave it unturned, just say what you got to say, no matter what it is, to, to make sure that you're okay with the vote you're taking. But don't, don't, don't stay, don't remain with doubts if, if at all possible.
I think, I think just going back to kind of the point about strict parliamentary procedure can also be, I think especially for newer board members, or especially for folks who are finding themselves on a dais for the first time, it, it can be actually a really kind of exclusionary way of participating. And we, we end up spending a lot of time kind of in, you know, what can be just procedural details instead of the meat of the conversation. And so I find like that, that, that has been one thing for me that has been frustrating about the kind of, you know, the use of parliamentary procedure to, I don't know, to direct action or to, right? And so it gets us stuck in, in procedure rather than substance. And so I just, I feel like that's one thing that I would love to just see us do less of together. And, and, and to really kind of try to get at the intention of what we're trying to do together as a board.
We used to, and I don't know when we kind of stopped it, I think because we got, didn't get responses. We used to add on our reports questions to ponder, or questions to consider.
I love that.
Tim did it last time, and I was so heartened to see it come about in one of the last reports. But I think we stopped doing it because there was no engagement with the questions with the board. And it isn't our job to ask, answer those questions. It was, we felt it's your job to discuss them and, you know, talk about them. And so we have no problem, rather than saying questions at the end of a report, which I didn't like, saying, here are some questions to ponder, to give a, almost a sentence starter, or a dialogue starter for the board. I like that, as it comes up for you. In terms of parliamentary procedure, all of you know that I struggle with that, or, not struggle, but I don't know very well. And so Omar has been really our guide on this. But I also find it restrictive and agree with Director De La Cruz in terms of sometimes it really keeps us from substantive discourse. I like the straw poll, and I don't know how a straw poll would work in our system. I think I'm going to chat with Omar about this offline. Okay, anybody else want to say anything else about this one? All right, let's move on to number 10. There's respect among board members for time and process. Board members balance their time, giving adequate time for questions and input of the seven board members. We have a lot of disagree on this one. I think we got called in to watch our own airtime last week, or last meeting. Thank you to a community member, staff member. And the comments here, you can read them. You know, we need to, we need to say what we need to say. We need to ask the questions we need to ask. And I think that, as we are aware, we will all try to be succinct. I'm, I'm going to say that. Let's move on. Number 11. Board members are analytical. We examine the unintended consequences of important decisions. We brainstorm for creative approaches to important problems, and we request input from staff and stakeholders likely to be affected by decisions. And you can see that there is strong agreement. Comments? Let's move on to number 12. Oh, go back, Diane, one more thing. I want to read this comment out loud. I like it a lot. Besides, not the KKKKKKK one, is that what the Fox says? I agree, and I think we have been making great effort. However, our community engagement process could always be better. If we want all stakeholders involved, then we need to engage differently. I think that's the message to all of us. Question 12. It's probable that each of the meetings, taken as a whole, serves as evidence to the community that the district is governed by a committed leadership team working together toward common goals. It's kind of a pat ourselves on the back type question. Comments? We have really put our MVP front and center, and I think we all applaud that. Okay, moving on, two more questions. Number 13. Strategically, the board asks the superintendent to articulate his, her vision for the district's future, and the board makes explicit use of long-term priorities of the district in dealing with current issues. Any comments here?
Before we move on, I just want to say, you know, I agree with that, and it, it looks like most people agree with that. And I think that Superintendent Kitamora is, does a great job articulating her vision for this district, and it's very helpful for us, you know, keeping us on the same page when we're trying to stay on task with our MVP, for sure. So I just wanted to say thank you for that, because it's very, very helpful, and you do a good job articulating.
Thank you, Jill. And the last question is, the board proactively works to address our mission, vision, and priorities. And then it, the statement of our mission, vision is right there. And you can see the results. And here are the comments. It's a guiding light, guiding values, education cannot operate in a silo. And to address the MVP, we must work with our community members, partners, leaders, and organizations. All right. Any, any questions before we take public comments, or any more comments from board members? And also, these questions, some of them seem a little repetitive to me. Any questions we're missing? Any questions we should delete? All good? All right, moderator, do we have any public comment on the board evaluation?
So this is for item E5. If you'd like to comment, please raise your hand. And there are no hands raised among attendees. There's one panelist hand.
That is Director De La Cruz who raised her hand. Okay. No, she didn't. She's shaking her head now. All right, any last comments, board members? This is our self-evaluation. We've done it in, we've taken it, and we've done it in public, and I invite the two other board members to participate on that as well. Okay. Good. Thank you, everyone. We're moving on to F items, consent items, and we are going to be, okay, so number one, approval absent board members. We have to do that one separately, and then we're going to pull five, and we're pulling eight. So can I have approval for two, three, four, six, seven, nine through 18?
I'm of approval for consent items two, three, seven.
Two, three, four, six, seven.
Two, three, four, six, seven, nine through.
18. 18.
Second.
That was moved by Director De La Cruz and seconded by Director McCormick. Adina?
We need public comment first. We need to ask for public comment.
I always forget that. We have one. Moderator? Oh, wait, was that still you, Allegra?
No, there, there is actually a, a public hand raised, but at this time, I'd like to just ask if there's anyone else who would like to comment on consent items, F items. Please raise your hand at this time. And we will hear from Maura Ryan.
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you, and the timer is going.
Thank you so much. My name is Maura Ryan. I am a parent of three children in the district, and a former school psychologist with San Rosa City Schools for, it was either seven or eight years. It's come to my attention, I want to comment on item S15, the salary schedules for school psychologists, speech-language pathologists, and nurses. It's come to my attention that, that there's different levels. And while I applaud you for recognizing the hard work that these specialists do, and the great number of years it takes for them to achieve, you know, proficiency, I have concern with the Level 2 certificate, the national certification. Basically, there's a national organization for school psychologists, which many programs for current students in their training programs to become school psychologists kind of, it's, it's built into their program. And so they automatically, just meeting the, the requirements of their program, they get national certification. But this, I would propose to you that you consider grandfathering in psychologists who are your veterans, are your mentors, are the ones who trained the, the school psychologists fresh out of school, because there's this discrepancy of quite a significant amount of money, where someone who, an older psychologist whose program, training program did not provide automatic certification nationally, is potentially making less than the people they are training. And, you know, new school psychologists still need a lot of mentoring and training. So it's just, it's, you know, if, if, like, for instance, myself, or some of my former colleagues didn't have the opportunity to receive that. Yes, they could pursue it now, but oftentimes, we need to get back to our graduate schools, which, you know, maybe the professors aren't there. It's really difficult to reestablish it if you've been out of school for 20 years. And just one other note, on Level 2, Step 5, it goes up $75,000, I believe it's a typo. Level 2, Step 5 is $180,000, and you might want to verify that. But so I just would urge you to consider grandfathering in. I could see there being a case for age discrimination, because pretty much anyone over the age of 50 doesn't have NASP certification, and would have to go to great extent in trouble to try to achieve it. Thank you very much. I appreciate all that you do, and thanks so much for hearing me today.
Maura, thank you very much for that information.
There are no more hands raised.
Thank you, Beth. So we have a motion to approve two, three, four, six, seven, nine through 18. Any discuss? Okay, so, real call vote, please, Adina?
Director Lopez.
Aye.
Director De La Cruz.
Aye.
Director McCormick.
Aye.
Director Monieri.
Aye.
Director Sheffield.
Aye.
Director Medina.
Aye.
President Fong.
Did we already ask Omar Lopez? Yes, okay. Hi, thank you. President Fong? Yes. Before you move on, I would just like to make a note that all of our school psychologists are on the, this salary schedule. There aren't any people to grandfather in. And I'd also like to note that the, this is the first time in years since I've been here that we're fully staffed with school psychologists, including bilingual. Bilingual. So I just really wanted to make that note, and give a huge plug to our special education department, and all they've done to make this attractive for school, school psychologists, and particularly bilingual to be in our district. Awesome. Thank you. We are going to take a short, just interpreter switch, and just a couple, three, couple, three minutes. So if you need to run off for a second, you have a chance right now, just run off, come right back, and interpreter switch before we get to consent items one, five, and eight. Okay, I'm going to give people a couple more minutes to get right back. A minute. Adina, Melanie, Beth, I think the timer's working out really, really well. Good job on getting that to work.
Perfect.
Agreed, very good.
Okay, we're all back? So we consent item one, approval of absent board members. We have one absent board member, Director Close, due to illness. Can I have that motion, please?
Move to approve Director Close's ab- absence.
Second.
Okay, so that was moved by Director McCormick and seconded by Director? De La Cruz.
Director Lopez.
Aye.
Director McCormick.
Aye.
Director De La Cruz.
Aye.
Director Monieri. Director Monieri.
I think we lost her.
No, I think. No, I see her.
Really slow and quiet. There we go.
Director Sheffield.
Aye.
Director Medina.
Aye.
President Fong.
Aye, thank you. That passes. That passes. Consent item 5, approval of contract. I think Director Medina pulled this for a discussion. Do you have a question on this one?
Yeah, let me get to the item. So on F5, I just had a couple of questions. It was actually the... Let me make sure, can anybody hear me?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
The, I think it's News ELA, the database contract. That made me... What is it? How do you say it? Newzilla, okay.
Like Godzilla.
Database thing. You know, I love databases. So it was really interesting. But this is also, you know, this is also a contract for the library, which made me just want to ask a question about what access to database do our students have to libraries through, to library databases as well? And is this one of them, or is there similar ones that are also accessible? And just, it's more of a curiosity question.
I think I might have to bring back the more comprehensive list of what other databases we have access to. I can tell you that Newzilla was actually something we brought forward in 2017 during the Tubbs fire, because there was a need at that point to be able to provide some additional resources. Sorry, you moved. And so it has been something that we've been actually using and grateful that we actually have that resource as we've had to sort of go into these sort of intermittent, you know, quote-unquote, breaks from traditional schooling. But this contract, it looks like it's really going to give them the pro version, which I think allows them to create more access for students with binders and also gives us some opportunities for additional professional development for teachers. As you know, we have that Wednesdays now through our MOU. And so I know coming up at the end of September, we'll be providing this professional development. And I'm getting a text that I guess our Learning A through Z provides reading materials currently that for KA4 that also has some databases as well. But I can get you a more comprehensive list from Teaching and Learning at our next meeting.
And then, you know, I go back to when I was a student and like, just learning how to use these could, you know, take some time. And I'm wondering, do we have resources to help students learn how to use these? You know, I don't know if all teachers, you know, take the time to do it, because that could be, because there could be like, separate resources that could help teach students that are just curious. Do we have any resources posted on how to effectively use these database resources?
You know, I do believe we have some videos. And then part of the professional development is not only just teaching teachers how to utilize this, but also teaching them how to teach them within the classrooms. But they have been trained on how to help the students be able to utilize specifically Newzilla.
And my other question related was around something that I read on the SAY contract. And it talked about, you know, the, well, this contract is until the district establishes its own, like, mental health wellness program. And I just was going to ask, is there maybe a potential timeline or something that we could present it with or may brought out a future date that kind of shows us where we're at in terms of the development of that program that it refers to there in that contract?
Yeah, we're actually bringing forward kind of a summary of our supports that we're doing for students in the return to school, looking at a later October board meeting. Have a number of people from our Student Family Services team kind of give you the whole perspective of where we are with student and staff wellness, the return to school practice, where we are with our vendors, and kind of where we're going. So we're doing a kind of a whole presentation at the last meeting in October. And so we'll probably incorporate and bring that for you right then.
Cool, thank you. Those are all the questions that I have.
All right. So would you like to move forward?
Director De La Cruz.
Yeah, I actually had a question that came up after Director Medina pulled it. Wanted to just take an opportunity. I saw that there's a contract for an art teacher at Traxx and only there. And I just wondered what we are doing about art instruction in other schools that are not charters? And kind of if a visiting artist program is available throughout kind of all schools in the district?
Yeah, one of the things that we've been talking about in Teaching and Learning is actually looking at that as Director Evans has been compiling sort of the needs assessment around supplies just for art teachers, but also looking at that as well as additional art opportunities for students at our elementary level. We used to actually have an art teacher through the, through the prep rotation, but that teacher did retire. And so that is a need that we need to be able to add back into the rotation.
Well, and we made the choice to do music.
We did. We did.
Rather than the art.
So I'm just wondering, why is there one art teacher at one kind of charter school? And why, why is that? How is that equity? And then what are we doing for other schools that are not charters? This feels like a strange application of resources at one, one school.
Correct. And also, as they're their own LEAs, obviously, they have their own different types of funding in which they can utilize for that. But I agree with you. It is an equity issue and needs to be addressed and something we can bring back with a plan to show how that can be equitable through all the elementary schools. And I...
Oh, sorry. Oh, sorry.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
These are site funds. What 5800 code, Rick, I would have to ask, are those, is that, would that encompass donation funds, 5800? Or is that instructional? Anyway, what I can't tell on here, whether it's just straight using their, the decision to use their site funds or whether it's donated funds.
And are site funds a function of charter schools? Are site funds kind of, you know, come from PTA fundraising?
That's, that's what I can't tell from the object code of 5800. Rick, do you have, do you know? Five bucks, do you?
I don't have the budget, the full budget string in front of me, but 5800 is for contracts and other services.
Okay.
So this does not signify if it's from a donation.
Let's look on the contract. Maybe someone can take a look at the contract, and we'll come back around and respond to that.
Okay. And I just, I want to, I want to offer help in this regard. You know, Sonoma County Museum, you know, had a kind of artist-in-residence program that Roseland has used for quite some time. I'm not necessarily suggesting that we hire the visiting artists-in-residence, who I know worked under that program, my husband. But, but I know there are lots of other good artists throughout the county who would be happy to come into Santa Rosa City Schools and, and do something similar. And so this, to me, was just kind of like a little bit of a flashing red light that I wanted to make sure that we took a second to acknowledge and to figure out kind of what, what's at the core here. And to me, it also gets at a question that I had. It just popped up as you were talking about site funds and if there's a way for site funds to be distributed equitably throughout the district as a whole, so that we deal with, you know, certain schools being able to raise significant amounts of funds and others not. Or a way of recognizing that cultural assets can come in many different ways besides just fundraising. And so how do we kind of, you know, get at what that means for each of our sites and how to really inspire kind of the donation of cultural assets as well, as well to our system as a whole?
Yeah. I think that, yes, we will... What this brings up for me is Director Evans doing an audit specific for right now, I'd like to see, is art education for every school. Let's do an audit. Let's see who's getting what and how's it being paid for.
And so then we have had other schools, yes, Hidden Valley and Lehman and Steel Lane using some of their site funds to assist with art education. But I think the idea of doing the audit is a great idea, and we can do that and bring it back.
And I think Director McCormick would support me in that why we're doing the maiden Santa Rosa Foundation is to offset some of these exact kinds of things.
Director Medina.
Yeah, you know, I was going to also bring up the foundation. It's a good opportunity to relook at the foundation, what's available there. But, but I think in terms of the needs assessment, also, maybe we could do like a resource assessment of local, like, grants and groups that offer money specifically for the arts. I'm sure we've probably done that already. But, you know, I know maybe the county and the city, I think, have different funds as well as a bunch of nonprofits. But I think that we could definitely benefit from that. And I think something that our students, especially now, could definitely benefit from.
Yeah.
Superintendent Kudimara?
Yes.
That is paid for out-of-site unrestricted lottery funds.
So it's money that is specific to them, that specifically to them?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Do we have any other discussion on item 5? Do we need to take public comment on this particularly separate? Yeah? Yeah. Is there any public comment on that, moderator?
Calling for public comment on item F5. Please raise your hand if you'd like to comment. There are no hands raised.
All right. So call for the motion?
I'd like to move to approve item 5.
Okay. So that was moved by Director De La Cruz and seconded by Director McCormick. May we have that vote, please, Adina?
President Fong, could you repeat, sorry, my wife, I cut out. Could you repeat who it was motioned by one more time?
Director De La Cruz and seconded by Director McCormick.
Thank you. Director Lopez.
Aye.
Director De La Cruz.
Aye.
Director McCormick.
Aye.
Director Muniere.
Aye.
Director Sheffield.
Aye.
Director Medina.
Aye.
President Fong.
Aye. Thank you. That passes, and we are moving on to consent item number 8, which is the approval of Westminster Woods contract. I'm going to ask Director Medina to ask his question about it.
Yeah, this was just simply a question in relation to the fires. I don't know, has Westminster Woods been impacted by the fires? Or, or how, you know, just, that's the question. Has there been an impact? And does that affect his contract?
I don't believe that they have, and I don't think it will. I know that Director Dillon, who's been the primary contact with Westminster Woods, has not heard anything. So I think at this point, we are, we are good to go.
Do we have any public comment on this?
Please raise your hand if you'd like to comment on item F8. There is a hand raised. Micah Carlin Goldberg.
Good evening, Micah Carlin Goldberg. Formerly sixth-grade teacher at Steel Lane, currently a technology TOSA. I like that we're offering this opportunity to some of our students. But my question is, what is the plan to roll this program out to all of our students? The ones who are not participating in Learning House? It seems like an equity issue to have the district pay for this for a small portion of our students who chose a specific program rather than to all of our students. I know that as a sixth-grade teacher, last year, we had to fundraise $18,000 to take our 62 sixth graders to science camp for a week. And, you know, that's a, that's a big pull for our, for our site. The kids work really hard for that, and community donations help. But having to, having to do that fundraising to get our kids there, I mean, is something I would think that the district should look at paying for outdoor education for all sixth-grade students out of non-site-based funds without having to have huge fundraising efforts in order to get that experience for our students. We were lucky enough that we made it out to our camp a few short weeks before we got quarantined. So we were lucky there. But as you're looking at this new program, what is the plan to roll this out to everybody? Thank you.
Thank you, Micah.
May I address the public comment?
President Fong. Dr. Guzman?
Yes. We are currently also working with land paths for our other elementary schools and be bringing forward a contract in the next month for the rest of our schools.
And I, we also are working with the water agency. And then I'd love to get involvement and work together with Safe Routes to School. Safe Routes to School with the kids. So we're exploring and gathering more partners as we go. I don't know why I did this. I don't know why I did this when I said Safe Routes to School, but just, I don't know. Okay.
A quick follow-up on this. Just describing this program, because I don't have it in front of me. What, is it kind of like that outdoor ed, like overnight multiple days? Or has it adapted or changed? I don't know what I read.
For right now, it is, you know, the virtual model. And hopefully, going into hybrid at some point, we'll actually be able to go out there and have day experiences. So right now, it's virtual labs.
Right. Seeing no other specific environmentalists, I'm sorry. Thank you.
And eventually, doing things on the school sites too, when we get to that point. Outdoors lab things.
I'll call for the motion.
I'll move to approve item F8.
Second. Other discussion on this? All right. So that was a motion by Director Medina and seconded by Director De La Cruz.
Director Lopez.
We've got discourse going on.
Aye.
Director Medina.
Aye.
Director De La Cruz.
Aye.
Director Muniere.
Aye.
Director Sheffield.
Aye.
Director McCormick.
Aye.
President Fong.
Aye. Thank you, everyone. That passes. We are now on the approval of the minutes. Item G1, approval of the minutes of the regular board meeting held on August 26, 2020.
Move for approval of the minutes on August 26th. Item 1.
Second.
That was moved by Director Sheffield and seconded by Director McCormick. May we have that vote, please?
Director Lopez.
Aye.
Director Sheffield.
Aye.
Director McCormick.
Aye.
Director Muniere.
Aye.
Director De La Cruz.
Aye.
Director Medina.
Aye.
President Fong.
Aye. Thank you. Are there any board member requests for information? Seeing none? For the good of the order, anything else? Superintendent Kudimara?
Yes, in the spirit of good meetings, and it would be very much appreciated if you would let us know, let me know if you're going to pull an item, so that we can be prepared. So just let us know. Thank you.
We like to be prepared, and we don't like to be surprised. I totally get that, particularly the preparation part. And we are wishing our fellow board member Jenny Close good health and also...
Two of our staff.
Two of your staff members. All right. Good night, everyone. Stay safe and happy Wednesday night.